Meeting of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster. Opened on February fifth, eighteen nineteen. Were gathered here at historic City Hall originally in state built in eighteen forty-two by Colonel John K. Long. City acquired the building in nineteen thirty-nine and since then the venue where the mayor and council conducts the city's business. One interesting fact about Westminster is in nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies plans were made to build a bypass around Westminster to ease traffic congestion. However, through funding issues and local opposition, the project stalled for years. For a long time, that stretch of unfinished road near the city became what we'll be known as the Road to Nowhere. Until the bypass was finally completed within the nineteen nineties. So, it's now it is the most heavily traveled section of road in Carroll County. Moving on, the council typically convenes on the second and fourth Monday of each month. Please note that these meetings are open to the public here at the City Hall. And also streamlined on the key of the city's YouTube page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We extend a gratitude to the media center for the partnership ensuring public access to these meetings. And that's enough for your benefit. I think it's every single one of them. Everyone can attest to that. Now, again, as we do every meeting with a pledge of the flag, I will be by a moment of silence. My allegiance to the Bible. Thank you very much. We took today's agenda and the entire information packet by the council we're using are available. No barring on the city's website. Hard copies of the agenda are available here in the front of room for those in attendance. We have one presentation this evening and that's a mayoral proclamation. Uh, of the twenty twenty-five Community Media Day. The mayor is not able to be here this evening, so you're stuck with me. So, Richard, you, Theresa want to talk here for the front of room? Community Media Day, October twenty twenty-five. Whereas the Community Media Center of Carroll County provides community members, nonprofit organizations, schools and government ATCs with the resources to produce, distribute and distribute digital media content of the importance to the local communities. And whereas the Community Media Center plays a vital role in civic participation by providing coverage of municipal meetings, local elections and community events. And whereas the Community Media Center with our local schools and colleges with internships, opportunities, and celebrates our student athletes with CMS Sportsnet. That's pretty much it. Um, award-winning coverage of local sports in its developing CMS Sportsnet plus a live training service featured in college from Carroll County High School stadiums and gymnasiums. And whereas the Community Media Center has established Channel eighteen as the first local access channel in the nation to provide twenty-four-seven coverage dedicated to local sports programming. And whereas the Community Media Center works to preserve our local history, provide means for diverse communities to tell their stories and empowers individuals to create content to inform, connect and improve the quality of life of our residents. And now therefore, I'm Dr. Mona Becker, Mayor of the City of Westminster. Join the common council and the city staff members to proclaim October twentieth, twenty twenty-five as Community Media Day within the City of Westminster. And all residents are hereby called upon to promote the importance of community media, the service and training available to the Community Media Center, the Community Media Center of Carroll County, and the programming available on Channel eighteen, nineteen, twenty-three, HD ten seventy-two and online at carolmediacenter.org. Congratulations. Thank you very much. And that's the truth. What you guys do is critically important and we're very grateful for that.
That's Lord George. Well, I just want to say, uh, thoughtful comments. Uh, thank you to the, uh, council members, uh, and mayor and support from the city. And by behalf of the Community Media Center's Board of Directors, Staff, Insurers and Volunteers, uh, this recognition of Community Media Day is important happens throughout the nation on this day and time. Uh, and, uh, our Carroll County stands as a shining example of what can be accomplished to keep the community informed and engaged, but not without its challenges. As our primary source of funding from cable television related fees now dwindles every year, cable companies are now also proposing federal legislation to eliminate local control over cable television altogether. So, we choose to, though, to continue to innovate, to work smarter and harder to protect the First Amendment and amplifying local voices and sharing the stories that celebrate our community. Your continued support makes that happen. And I'd like, uh, Theresa, if you had any comments?
Thank you again for your ongoing support of the media center. We are definitely facing challenges, but we're grateful for all of the partners that we have in Carroll County that continue to support the Community Media Center and frankly, the importance of the local voice. But thank you.
I would help. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Absolutely. We'll now move on to approval of minutes. We'll consider approval of the previous meeting minutes. We have one set of minutes, uh, from the meeting of the mayor and council, uh, on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dayhoff.
So, a second.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peckraro with the second. Any discussion related to the minutes hearing done? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar this evening. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
I'll make a motion in a second.
Mr. Huff with the second. Uh, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Abstaining. Thank you very much, Mr. Dayhoff. And the consent calendar is approved. We'll now move on to reports from the mayor. And I had something, uh, that I was going to read and I am very sorry for not having this up in front of me. I had a little issue getting my computer started at the beginning of the meeting and now I'm gonna go back and find this real quick. Again, very sorry. Um. Since the mayor's not here to make a comment, I'm gonna go ahead and take the liberty to do so, um, uh, instead. I would like to send my sincere, sincere appreciation to everyone from Public Safety, the Streets Department and the Recreation and Parks Department for the tremendous effort and teamwork that went into making both Fall Fest and the Oyster Stroll safe, organized and enjoyable, an enjoyable community event. These events require a great deal of planning, coordination and on-the-ground collaboration between multiple city departments to ensure public safety, smooth traffic flow and positive experience for representative visitors alike and visitors alike. Your professionalism, attention to detail and dedication to serving the community did not feel unnoticed and truly contributed to the success of both events. Thank you for your continued commitment to excellence and team. Thank you for bearing with me for that. And now we will move on to reports from committee. And this thing really get in the hard time. I love technology. If you just have to wait. I can't get this thing to come back to my pencil script. Okay, so we'll move on to reports from the committee. We'll start off the Arts Council. And Mayor Becker is not here, so we'll move on to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Mr. Huff.
Uh, the only thing I will mention is, uh, there are items, uh, later on the agenda that are related to some of the work that the Economic and Community Development Committee have done. Um, so that's something I want to mention.
Great. Thank you very much. Finance Committee, Mr. Peckraro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee has met since the last, uh, meeting of the mayor and common council. And I'll just note that in addition to just some general updates on city's finances, we did have some preliminary discussions on what the fee structure might look like, uh, for the clubhouse down Wakefield Valley. And nothing to report on that yet. We're still thinking some of those issues through. Looking forward, bringing something to you all soon. And certainly before it's, it's open, but we obviously want to get that out there so that people can show me.
That's probably pretty complex. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Peckraro. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, no comment.
Public Safety, just one quick thing. Um, the Police Department had a recruiting event about a week ago and it was very successful. Good turnout, some good applicants, um, better ones we've seen in a while, which really bodes well. Um, and shows that departments, it's our whole place for folks to come and work. And that's in large part due to your efforts around that department. So, we're grateful. Thank you. Recreation and Parks Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Um, you kind of mentioned some of this, but I would need to thank our, um, entire staff from the Police Department, Public Works and Bars and Rec who works at Oyster Stroll. Um, we say it a lot, but our strolls take a lot of heavy lifting. There's so many different departments and a lot of collaboration and they do it well. Um, and again, it was wonderful that the day was great. Um, I particularly, um, found some, uh, great little, uh, locations that I love their food, particularly that Hooked on Seafood truck. Make sure they keep returning here because they have some really delicious food. Um, not that there aren't others with delicious food too, but that was my personal favorite. Um, anyway, I wanted to extend my appreciation. Um, and the next event will be Downtown Halloween Party on Saturday, the twenty-fifth at three P M.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. And I apologize. I did skip, uh, the Public Works report. So, Mr. Peckraro, not to shortchange you.
It's all right, Mr. President. Thanks very much. Um, Public Works didn't meet since the last meeting of the mayor and common council. And, uh, just update you on a couple of things. First of all, very pleased to share with you all in case you weren't aware of it. Uh, the city administrator, uh, was able to show, tell us that the, um, unification processor is working there. So, we've hit one of the milestones, you know, for the, um, for the E N R projects. So, we're very pleased about that. Still working through some other issues, but you know, are making some progress there. Um, also very pleased to report that, you know, Pure Water Westminster facility continues to also be on track. So, we're pleased with the progress we're making there. You know, uh, as the city administrator shared with us, you know, there's lots of different pieces at play there. And so, when we get, you know, a little bit stalled on one, we're able to move forward on others. So, overall, the whole project remains on track. So, really pleased about that. Um, and, uh, that's it. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peckraro.
Who wants a Technology Committee, Mr. Dayhoff?
No report this evening.
It's because the, uh, director of that department does such a good job. You never had to report anything.
Yeah, we agree.
Intergovernmental, Mr. Huff.
Uh, nothing to report tonight, sir. Thank you very much.
We'll move on to council comments and discussion. Mr. Peckraro.
Uh, just add my, you know, appreciation to all the city staff who worked on the leadership of the department and especially Ms. Gilbert on another fabulous event this weekend. Um, you know, we were with some folks from out of town and these events continue to be, you know, something that really, you know, draws people to Westminster, creates a lot of activity. And, you know, people are just amazed that we can't believe, you know, the event like this. They thought it was gonna be a block wall. And then there's, they saw the whole length of people who all went up Main Street, you know, amazed with what they saw. So, again, another wonderful event. In addition to all, and we shouldn't forget this, all the regular great stuff that goes on in our Parks Department, I mean, the fitness center and all we have, and all the parks and other activities we have. As somebody who doesn't go to the fitness center's office, I should. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty great to be able to go there and then find that quality of, um, you know, operation there and operate by the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peckraro. Mr. Dayhoff?
Uh, no report. I guess I, well, I guess I just want to echo the remarks of how much I enjoyed the, uh, Oyster Stroll. But, um, no, no, no further reports.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Ms. Gilbert?
Uh, a couple of things. Um, this past weekend was an extremely busy weekend in Carroll County. Not only did we have, um, the Oyster Stroll that we were already talking about, that was absolutely terrific, that I believe probably most everybody at least stepped in at. Um, but Carroll County also was the host to the Vietnam Traveling Memorial Wall. Um, I don't know if anybody up here got a chance to, um, to take a visit other than, um, Councilman Dayhoff, who I did see on Thursday evening with the opening. But, um, it was quite the ceremony, um, for the opening ceremony. Uh, it was, I was able to listen to Lieutenant Colonel Oliver North's speech was, which was amazing. Uh, but I wanted to send a special thank you to Tammy Ray and Babel involved for organizing and hosting the wall for the weekend. Um, it was well done. It was a lot of hard work bringing it here to Carroll County and, um, to those to, to, to them and to all their work. On the sixteenth, um, the Historical Society will be at Shaken, Not Served, um, at Covey Island Spirits. And the Maryland Craft Cake Fest will be, um, here, uh, October twenty-fifth at the Farm Museum. Um, along with the fact that it will be homecoming again that same weekend. So, just wanted to mention those few things.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Mr. Huff? Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, I think I've mentioned, it's already been mentioned, but the staff does a terrific job. All the departments do a different terrific job with Fall Fest and the Oyster Stroll. Um, we really punch above our weight when it comes to this kind of events. And, um, Mr. Peckraro, I have people that come in to town, uh, from out of town that are always just blown away with how, um, impressive and how, you know, they do. They think it's only gonna be like, you know, some quaint little one-block event and it's, you know, four or five. I don't know how many blocks it is, but it's a block. Um, and, um, anyway, just a terrific job in all regards to staff. So, greatly appreciate it and, uh, I always have a wonderful time and my friends do as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. We'll now move on to bids. We have one bid on the agenda this evening. It's the approval of bid, uh, of the bid to S F M S L L C. Um, and, uh, we have, uh, to approve a contract for ADA ramps and sidewalk retrofit services in the amount of, I think, to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Miss Simba's.
Thank you, sir. In the fiscal year twenty twenty-six general fund budget, includes funding for the retrofitting of sidewalks to meet ADA standards. The city issued a request for bids for R F B on August twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, with bids due on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Bidders were requested to provide unit pricing for the fiscal year twenty-six ADA ramps and sidewalk retrofit services contract. Three bids were received with each firm's unit pricing based on the provided schedule of values. City staff have evaluated references and unit pricings from all submitters. Confined S F M S L L C of Bethesda, Maryland submitted the most economically beneficial bid for the city's needs. S F M S L L C adequately provided ADA ramps and sidewalk services for the city in fiscal year twenty-five. Work under the contract shall begin in fiscal year twenty-six and be completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. The fiscal year twenty-six budget proposed for the general fund, I mean, actually it's the C I P, includes an allocation of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for ADA ramps and sidewalk retrofits. As stated above, the bids are based on unit prices of the schedule of values. ADA ramp locations reference, reference list is subject to change. Contractors shall continue their work based on the unit price bid until allocated funds are exhausted without exceeding two hundred and sixty-six. Staff therefore recommends that the mayor and common council approve the bid to S F M S L L C and approve a co- a contract for ADA ramps and sidewalk retrofit services in the amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you for muscling through that, Miss Simba's. You are, you are not a hundred percent, so we appreciate that.
It's painful to hear.
Not as painful as it is for you, I'm sure. Okay, so can we go ahead and get a motion for the approval of the contract, please?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dayhoff with the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think Ms. Gilbert got you. We'll go with Ms. Gilbert. Uh, okay, now that we have a motion and a second, uh, it's on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I just have a, have a question, maybe a couple of questions. Um, and I'm not in any way opposed to this. Please, we've got good prices. Just trying to understand because it wasn't clear for the amount. So, the, the, the scope of work that was bid on would be covered by hundred and five, um, thousand, roughly a hundred and five thousand dollars, but we have additional work. And we have, since we have additional money, we'll be able to continue them, that unit pricing to finish additional things. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Mostly, yes. So, the schedule of, of values, which was attached to the staff memo, is included in the bid. Um, we provide a list of what we think will, the streets will be. Um, as you can imagine, if, uh, this was entirely mobilization, meaning we decided tomorrow to do this intersection and then a month later we decided to do that intersection, it would cost more for the contractors to come out and mobilize every single time. So, we give a list of what we think will include. And then if there's any additional money left over, we use the unit price to get to move on to the, the list that would otherwise be done next year. Or whatever needs to come up in the meantime.
Uh, great. Well, great that we got so much work done. Thank you.
And that's how we handle our pavement management as well.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Peckraro. Anyone else have any questions or comments related to?
Mr. President, I have just one, one by behalf of this with us. How do we determine which of, you know, which particular sidewalk portions that we're doing? Is that something that Public Works makes a list and prioritizes, I'm assuming?
Yes, we make a five-year plan and then we reevaluate every single year. Sometimes things happen and something that wasn't gonna be, um, need to be replaced for four years, next year becomes a hot priority. And so, as they're preparing the, the budget, we have that list ready to go.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
So, these numbers are quite old, which is why, um, sometimes the, the bids don't come back the way that we think because the market's quite a bit different a year plus later.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Anyone else? Any questions or comments related to the item on the floor?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dayhoff.
I'm curious as to how much more work we have to do.
Uh, we'll spend, we intend to spend the entirety of the funds, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
But, I mean, how much work? How much, how much, how much longer is the list? We have, we have more work next year and more work the, the following year?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't anticipate we'll ever achieve completion. We just keep rolling through on that list.
Oh, but that helps. Okay. Because I was wondering, I mean, prices are only gonna continue to escalate. Um, okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Yeah, I would assume, maybe incorrectly, but I think it's, it's just like the roads. I mean, the road will never, ever have all of our road paved up. Because as we pave in one area or the other areas, we're just using life and we have to replace it. I assume it's exactly the same for this. They, these things wear out. They're, they have a finite life, lifespan. Okay. Okay, herein. Ms. Gilbert, you have anything since everybody else has had to pipe it up on this one?
Yep.
Just making sure.
Yep, I would've smoked up the, something just happened there. I'm good. I'm good on the sidewalk.
Herein no other discussions. We'll move on to a vote. All those in favor of rewarding the bid, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the bid is awarded. Now, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have two items before this, this evening. Item number one is the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh one. Mr. Whitwell?
Good evening, Mr. President, Council. Uh, this is the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh one, Automobile Use Text Amendment in ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, amending chapter one sixty-four, zoning and subdivision of land of the code of the city of Westminster. Section one sixty-four dash three, definitions and word usage to add the definition of automobile detailing shop, automobile repair and service shop major, automobile repair and service shop minor and automobile sales to replace the term service station with automobile service station. Remend section one sixty-four dash one twenty-one, on-premises business signs and article twenty, special provisions. Section one sixty-four dash one forty-nine, automobile service stations as well as the permitted uses and/or special exception uses in the mixed-use infill zone, section one sixty-four dash thirty-nine point two. B Business Zone, section one sixty-four dash forty-one and one sixty-four dash forty-two. D B Downtown Business Zone, section one sixty-four dash forty-five point eight and one sixty-four dash forty-five point nine. I R Restricted Industrial Zone, section one sixty-four dash fifty-four. I G General Industrial Zone, section one sixty-four dash sixty-one and section one sixty-four dash sixty-two. N C Neighborhood Commercial Zone, section one sixty-four dash sixty-four point two. P I Planned Industrial Zone, section one sixty-four dash sixty-six and one sixty-four dash seventy-five. And P R S C Planned Regional Shopping Center Zone, section one sixty-four dash one hundred and one sixty-four dash one oh one to reflect the newly defined uses.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitwell. Mr. Depot?
Thank you. On July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the mayor and common council held a public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one. At this hearing, the zoning administrator highlighted the Planning and Zoning Commission's three recommended amendments uh, to ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one as introduced by the mayor and common council. The mayor closed the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one and the mayor and common council took no action on the ordinance that night. On August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the zone administrator outlined the commission's recommended amendments to the Economic and Community Development Committee or the E C D C. The zone administrator also discussed whether the commission's proposed amendments to ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one may be better addressed by reviewing and possibly amending the zoning ordinance section one sixty-four dash seventy-five D, the process to allow certain local retail businesses and service shops in the P I zone. And briefly, right now, the process would be if you're trying to add a retail use under that section, you would have to submit an amendment to the development plan. It would be processed and sent to the Planning Zoning Commission with recommendation and ultimately to the mayor and common council for final approval and adoption of the amended development plan. On September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, following discussions with the E C D C, when, um, the zone administrator recommended that ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one as introduced, be amended only to keep restaurant as a permitted use in the P I zone under zoning ordinance section one sixty-four sixty-six G, addressing one of the commission's recommended amendments. The, uh, the E C D C supported the zone administrator proposed amendments to ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one. In addition, they, the E C D C supported the future amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend the procedures and regulations of the P I zone to allow the, for the commission or the planning commission to approve a P I zone development plan amendment and to increase the acreage limitation, um, allowed under section one sixty-four seventy-five D for local retail businesses and service shop uses. And this is important because this, after this meeting, we're gonna have an introduction of an amendment that addresses, uh, these potential changes. Uh, with that, the Department of Community Plan Development recommend that the mayor and common council approve ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one, Automobile Use Text Amendment as amended and provided in attachment one of this report to maintain restaurants as permitted use under zoning ordinance section one sixty-four sixty-six as follows, G Motor Inns or Motels With or Without a Restaurant. And that completes my report.
Thank you very much. I have a motion, uh, for adoption of the ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one, please. Mr. President, uh, first, I'm gonna make a motion to amend ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one as provided in attachment one of the staff report dated October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, and, and the change, of course, to be clear, is the fact of making it clear that voter inns are, are motels with or without a restaurant. I think we added the with or without the restaurant back in. It through the process between the planning commission's recommendation, the sessions through E C D C. Since we introduced, since we introduced this, correct, Mr. Depot?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilbert. Is there any discussion on the motion for amendment? We are not approving, adopting new ordinance at this point. This is strictly related to the motion to amend the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor of amending ordinance twenty twenty-five oh one as, uh, stated by Mr. Huff, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it and the ordinance is amended. Now, we'll move on to a motion to adopt of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh.
Mr. President, I will now move to adopt ordinance twenty, uh, twenty-five oh one as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Peckraro with the second. Is there any? Mr. Peckaro with the second. Is there any discussion related to twenty, twenty-five oh one's adoption? Hearing none, uh, call for vote. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash oh one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the ordinance is adopted. We'll now move on to the introduction of ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash oh nine. Mr. Whitworth?
Yes, sir. Now, this is the introduction of ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash oh nine. PI planned industrial zone uses and procedures text amendment in ordinance of the mayor and common council of Westminster, amending chapter one sixty-four, zoning and subdivision of land of the code of the city of Westminster. Article twelve PI planned industrial zone, section one sixty-four dash sixty-six. Uses permitted to add hotels as a permitted use in article twelve PI planned industrial zone, section one sixty-four dash seventy-five D procedures and article twenty-three amendments, section one sixty-four dash one eighty-eight plan development to authorize the planning and zoning commission, rather than the mayor and common council, to approve amendments to an approved development plan designating areas of the planned industrial zone for retail and commercial uses and to increase the allowable gross acreage of such uses from fifteen percent to thirty percent.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitworth. Mr. Depot?
Thank you. And this will sound somewhat familiar. Um, on August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, the zoning administrator introduced to the Economic and Community Development Committee, or the ECDC, the possibility of amending zoning ordinance, section one sixty-four seventy-five D to allow for a more streamlined process and an increase in acreage limitation for local retail businesses or service shops uses in the PI zone. On September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, the zone administrator presented to the ECDC possible amendments to the zoning ordinance, began to streamline the process and increase the acreage. The ECDC has supported a future amendment to the zoning ordinance to amend the procedures and regulations in the PI zone under zoning ordinance, section one sixty-four dash seventy-five D to allow for the planning and zoning commission to approve PI zone development plan amendments and to increase the acreage limitation from fifteen percent to thirty percent for local retail businesses and our service shop uses. During, during discussions with the ECDC, it was referenced on several occasions that a hotel use is or should be allowed in the PI zone. Currently, the zoning ordinance, section one sixty-four sixty-six G, lists motor ends and motels as allowed uses or permitted use to the PI zone. However, hotels is not listed and therefore would not be allowed. So with that, the ordinance generally proposes to add new permitted use hotels as to the permitted motor end and motels use in the PI planned industrial zone. Increase the acreage limitation eight, um, from fifteen percent to thirty percent under section one sixty-four seventy-five D for local retail businesses and service shop uses. And three, to allow the planning zoning commission to approve PI zone development plan amendments for local retail businesses or service shop uses in the PI planned industrial zone. With that, staff recommends that the proposed ordinance, twenty, twenty-five oh nine, be introduced for consideration by the mayor and common council and be referred to the planning and zoning commission for its review and recommendation to the mayor and common council. Available for any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Depot. Let's go ahead and get on the floor. I have a motion to introduce uh, ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash oh nine.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for the introduction of ordinance number twenty, twenty-five oh nine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. We have a second. Now I'll go ahead and put her on the floor for discussion. Mr. President?
Mr. Huff? So just uh, some commentary here. Um, I think the goal here is to try to make this as business friendly as we can. Um, the planned industrial zone ideally is the majority of the principal permitted uses under it are all industrial related. And, but at the same time, we want the flexibility in this kind of development to have these local retail businesses and service shops, which is under, listed under procedure under five A. And there's a whole list of them, whether it's bakery shop, daycare facilities, drugstore, dry cleaners. But obviously, we don't want those all throughout that zone. Currently, there is a fifteen percent cap on that. After a lot of discussions, we kind of thought it made a lot of sense to increase that to provide the property owners in those zones more flexibility so that they can fill out the states. And also, quite frankly, if I'm working, if I'm an employee of industrial use, it's nice to have some of those uses around because then not only competing from other nasal visits there, but I myself can go to the dry cleaner or the bank or those uses. Then as to the change related to it coming to the mayor and common council, I want to be clear about this. The idea is to make this pro- process less static. The li- the list of approved retail businesses and service shops, we control that as the legislative branch. We're the ones that control that. Planning and zoning doesn't control the list of uses, neither do the zoning administrator. The zoning administrator simply, when someone submits something, is see, sees whether that's an allowable use. So to me, it seems kind of redundant that if someone's coming in to add a local retail business or service shop use and it's on the list, it's a clothing store, it's a cellular or phone server, I'm reading off the list right here, that if it's under that category, you know, while there needs to be a certain level of review, does it really need to go to planning commission? And then also as well as to the mayor and common council. Um, because all the zoning administrator is doing is enforcing the zoning code, which we, as the mayor and common council, have control of. So I think that's the motivation here is really from the, you know, economic and community uh, development talk about this as far as trying to be a little bit more business friendly. And this ordinance was kind of birthed out of some of the discussions regarding the other ordinance where we thought it was best addressed in this new ordinance that's up to us tonight.
Anything else want to be heard on this item?
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Um, I guess I certainly found Mr. Huff's comments to be compelling and persuasive, but I'm still uncomfortable with the, with section one sixty-four dash one eighty-eight that will um, replace the mayor and council's vision um, in matters of approving amendments to the approved development. Doesn't make the areas of the planned industrials of retail uses. I'll look forward to the Economic and Community Development Committee making their case on this. And certainly, Mr. Huff, he just made the case really well. I, I'm, I'm open, I certainly have an open mind about it. And I certainly want to make things business friendly. But having been involved in this for thirty, thirty-five, forty years, um, I just like the vision of the elected officials as the final word for matters such as this. So I'll, I'll just look forward to uh, the uh, Economic and Community Development Committee making their case uh, to gather my support for the question. Right now, of course, I'll vote for this introduction, uh, for discussion, consideration, of course. That'll be it for right now, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mi- Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Mr. Huff?
So, Mr. Depot, just to be clear here, the, any other amendment to the development plan has to come before the mayor and common council, the way the ordinance is written. The only thing that we're changing is when it has to do with these particular uses under five A. Am I not correct for reading through the ordinance? So the mayor and common council is really not giving up anything other than the, what's listed under five A, which again, my point being that as the legislative body, we already control what's on that list. Am I correct in my interpretation?
You're correct. The, the initial creation of a development plan as PI zone would be approved by the mayor and common council. So at that point, uh, the applicants can certainly demonstrate areas of retail use or other industrial type of uses. Any amendment to that plan that is not under that section one sixty-four seventy-five D of retail uses would have to still come back to mayor and common council. This only allows amendments to an approved development plan um, to be approved by planning commission or the specific retail uses that are adopted by the mayor and common council.
So specifically, for example, Mr. Depot, with the, the cannabis overlay, that's still coming back to us. That has no impact with, with what we're doing here tonight?
Correct.
Or if there's any other major change to a, amendment to a development plan that other than just dropping in a, a bakery shop under the, the thirty percent threshold that we're proposing?
Yes, a, a development plan would dictate density to say that if they want to increase square footage or further develop it beyond. And it did include one of these retail uses. That's certainly something that would have to be approved by the mayor and common council.
I just want to make sure I'm representing things correctly.
Yes.
But, thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on the item?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Peckaro.
That's what I, 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 I sort of, I think, I think that, you know, the members who were present, and I was not present for these conversations, but I think did a very thorough job in thinking through these issues. Um, in particular, you know, I, I recognize Mr. Dayhoff's concern, but at the same time, as someone who also has sat here for a long time looking at these things, I view the transfer of this authority to the planning and zoning commission is essentially sort of giving them a ministerial function here. They're, they're really just applying the code that the, that the mayor and council have adopted in, in expanded, you know, situation where these. And since we will have already defined what that is, I'm comfortable allowing, you know, to skip that step and, and move things one little more quickly. So again, thanks to the committee, this, this has been a very complicated, two pieces of legislation. I think the committee's done a very good job working through, through it all.
Thank you, Mr. Peckaro. Uh, I'll go ahead and make one comment. Um, if, if they go on ACDC and they want folks that did work on this, when the property owner, developer, attorney for them came to us, I believe they had asked for us to increase that percentage. If I'm not mistaken, it might have been fifteen or twenty percent, something, or up another five or ten percent above. It wasn't all the way to thirty percent.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
No, what they proposed, they proposed a low or not, I'm positive of that. Okay, so we took the decision ourselves to increase that number over and above what the property owner is. That was really the impetus for this piece of legislation. Um, and their attorney, one of which is sitting here with us, um, we gave them a higher percentage because we felt like um, the, the argument they were making and the need for it was even greater than what they were asking for. And I just wanted to point that out because I think it is a good example of us being very responsive and proactive. Um, looking beyond just what they were asking for and thinking about where are we going to be in five or ten years? And is this going to come back before us again? So we went ahead and said, let's just bump it all the way up to thirty. Um, and uh, I, I just wanted to point that out that, uh, you know, we take a little criticism from time to time in, in not being maybe as friendly as we should, that I think we kind of went even a little beyond in this particular case in terms of what we were being asked to do. I'll just leave that at that. Hearing no other comments, I'll go ahead and call for a vote on the introduction of ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash oh nine. Uh, all those in favor of the, approving the introduction of ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash oh nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and the ordinance is introduced. We have no unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that I'm not aware of? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. We have one item of new business. Mr. Peckaro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move into common council and adjourn into a closed meeting on Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Excuse me, the conclusion of the regular meeting and according to the general provisions, article of the annotated code of Maryland, section three dash three zero five B one, uh, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of employees or other officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. And any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peckaro. Uh, is, I may have a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, I'm sorry?
Need a second.
Oh, oh, you're making the motions, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that. Thank you very much, Mr. Huff. Thank you for keeping me straight, Mr. Parliamentarian. Uh, now that we have a second, is there any discussion related to the item on the floor? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, are you intending to come back into session after this?
Thank you for asking that question and we are not. Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of uh, uh, the motion to go into closed session immediately following this meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it and we will go into a closed session upon the completion of this meeting and we will not return. Okay, we'll now move on to citizen comments, the final item on our agenda this evening. My goodness gracious, I'm just hosing this all up left and right. No, I was trying to give staff a break. Let's kind of get by so they didn't have to, uh, do their thing. I'm sure you would take it tonight, right? Ms. Immalls?
Thank you, sir. We're going to start right in with the reports and we'll start with Ms. Hoover. Excellent job on the oyster shelling.
Thank you. Good evening. Not much to report tonight. We are just um, in a cycle of events where we seem to be um, getting one in the door and put away and, and staging for another. So that was the case today. Uh, the entire downstairs of our beautiful Fall Fest building smell like creatures of the sea. Um, as we watched wagons and oyster baskets. Uh, I am happy to report that our shell um, collection from this event, which goes back into the Chesapeake Bay to build reefs um, for farm-raised oysters was very high. We were sitting at about sixty-seven bushels of shell collected um, from the oysters that were consumed at this event. So um, our partner, the Coastal Conservation Association um, was quite pleased with the amount of shell that was produced and will be returned to the bay. So um, we're always happy to be a larger part of um, a bigger goal, not just providing a, an amount for this community, but also providing um, habitat for farm-raised oysters in, in our bay that we um, work so very hard to protect in this county. Um, so other than that, please join us two weeks from now for our downtown Halloween um, uh, party and spooky sprint that will be from three to I can't even remember, three to six P M on Main Street. Um, our spooky sprint stops off at two fifty-five P M. Super fun to watch. We have a lot of families that join us for this mile run series. Um, everybody dresses up in costumes and it's a real hoot. So this is the second race in our three-run mile run series. We do include the jingle bell run, which stops off right before our miracle of Main Street parade uh, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report. Are there any questions?
There any questions for Ms. Hoover?
Just one quick comment. I, I found it interesting. You said you're tween cycle. So when do you off cycle? For about eleven days, maybe right around Christmas and New Year's and that's it?
Pretty much.
That's right.
But I want to take an opportunity to thank the Public Works Department as well, who um, helped put on the stroller, as you all know. Um, and it's, I don't know if anyone sticks around at the end of the straws to see Public Works do the dance that they do, but all of the street sweepers come out to clean everything up. And this year, by seven thirty P M, we had everything open and done. You wouldn't have known the difference.
It's like magic. It really is like magic.
It is, but it's not magic. It's a lot of hard work and uh, and planning. So I'm going to take a moment to thank the Public Works Department. Um, move on to the housing department.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brown? If not, we'll move on to the I T department, which sometimes is forgotten when it comes to these trolls. Um, but they are, are also integral in making sure that everything is up and running. Anytime we, you could purchase something, we have to make sure that the I T department has got all that stuff sorted for us. Uh, so there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff where you never see them. But thank you, sir, for what you've done to help us for this.
The team come together, joins the fun. So, other than that, I have no reports, ma'am.
So anything for Mr. Moore? Hearing none, uh, Ms. Rogers is not with us today. We will move over to Mr. Depot.
Thanks, Emily.
Here we go.
Well, October first, the historic district commission approved post-construction application for historic rehabilitation tax credit, T C twenty-five oh one for thirty-one West Main Street. The Eric Building, this was for um, the replacement of fourteen windows in that building. The project turned out really nice, if anybody's noticed that. Um, if not, please walk by and take a look at the nicely windows. The HCC also discussed the 2026 Carroll County History Day Competition, which is on February 28th, 2026, at Winters Mill High School and its nation's 250th preparations. The Board of Zoning Appeals, October 7th meeting was canceled as there were no applications before the board. On October 23rd, the Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to hear Site Development Plan S25-8 for Malcolm Drive Medical Center to construct a 22,000-square-foot medical center and a 12,000-square-foot building that will be used for either office space or a school daycare use. Clarifying subdivision plan M2427 Meadow Branch Industrial Park to subdivide certain rural properties owned IR Restricted Industrial Zone from one lot to three lots. The subject property is identified as tax Sstat number 07148895 and located off and north of Buckshot Road and north of the Buckshot Road Meadow Creek Drive intersection. And lastly, Wakefield Valley Development Plan Amendment DP 2401, parcel W and parcel X. And again, this is to add 35 new density rights to parcel W to construct 35 single-family detached dwelling units and dedicate parcel X to Carroll Lutheran Village for open space. And also tomorrow, we will, it's the Tree Commission sponsored Forest Workshop at McDaniel College, starting at 2:07 AM. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Devoe. Are there any questions for the Petty Director? Hearing none, then we'll move on to the Police Department. Acting Chief Major Price.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening. During the past two weeks, our primary focus remained on community outreach. We partnered with Target of Westminster and had the Coffee with a Cop event on October 1st. It was great. We had a lot of people come out, a lot of great conversation. And we truly appreciate everybody that came out. Excuse me. Additionally, strengthening some of our ties with our faith-based partners. I attended the annual Blue Mass at St. John's on October 4th and got the chance to say a couple of words and thank them for their support. It was a great event. Also got to connect with passenger or Pastor Pen Singer from Grace Lutheran Church. Had a good conversation with him, and we're hoping to partner on some future initiatives. But that's our main focus, in trying to build some of these relationships out there. We're continuing to do that with some of our faith-based partners.
Thank you, Major Price. Are there any questions for the Police Department?
Not so much a question, just one comment. Major Price, you know, I had a couple of business owners over the past couple of weeks approach me about just a couple of things and concerns they had. I just wanted to compliment you on the responsiveness this evening, Miss Imhals, because I'm actually supposed to roll that as well related to that. It was a quick response, and the business owners both got back to me that were talking about, within a day or two, commenting how happy they were with the communication, the responsiveness, how good they felt about the conversations that took place. It's really important, and I appreciate it to that. Shall I speak for everyone? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, that concludes departmental reports.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to citizens' comments. Final item on our agenda is citizen comments, during which we invite the town to address the Mayor and Council any issues related to tonight's agenda or other city matters. For those not attending the public meeting, we welcome your comments via email at comments@westminstermb.gov. All email comments will be shared with the Mayor and Council. Please input your address and phone number with your comments. We will now invite the comments from those present this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their thoughts with the Mayor and Council. Our role at this point is to listen to your comments and respond appropriately after consulting with staff and each other. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Just briefly, Kelly Miller, 73, East Main Street, Westminster, Maryland 21157. I'm here tonight on behalf of the owners of Carroll County Commerce Center, who have an interest in the two tax amendments, the one that was adopted tonight and the one that was introduced tonight. We just briefly wanted to say that we are encouraged by the ECDC's initiation of the second tax amendment. We look forward to being a part of that dialogue. We were a little bit surprised to see it on an agenda because we hadn't seen it yet. So we've only had a few hours to digest it. But we are looking forward to a dialogue and a constructive process. And we are hopeful that that will alleviate the concerns that we did raise related to the tax amendment that was approved this evening. So we appreciate the work that has gone into that so far and we look forward to that continued discussion, both with the Planning Commission and members of this council. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wish to be heard this evening? Okay. That concludes the agenda and our meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, October 27th. And with that, and without objection, we are adjourned.